Good evening, board members. My name is Darrell Nappin, resident of Douglas County. A few years back, the board wrestled with parental requests to remove objectionable books from the school libraries. We are here again tonight to address the exact same topic, only with new titles, but the same concerns. Before I read excerpts from the book titled "Sold: A Fictional Account of a Girl Sold Into Sexual Slavery," that contains very graphic descriptions of violent rape repeatedly, again and again, let me speak to a few of the objections why some would say this book should remain in your libraries. First, we are told this book has value because will warn children of the dangers of human trafficking. If that is what the school wants, then buy the student's tickets to see the movie featuring Jim Caviezel titled "Sounds of Freedom." It's coming here to Alexandria, July 3rd. They'll get the same warning without the graphic sexual violence. Secondly, we hear the accusation of book banning when we ask for books to be removed. That is total nonsense. There are millions of books in the world that will not fit in your libraries, so you must choose which ones are the most edifying and educational. That is called selection, not banning. This book is in Discovery Middle School and the high school as well. So when I read these excerpts, know that sixth graders aged 11 can check it out and will forever be affected by what they read. Here are the excerpts I've chosen. Page 106. "Let me explain to you. You belong to me. I paid a pretty sum for you. You will take men to your room and do whatever they ask of you. You will work here like the other girls until your debt is paid off." Page 120. "He is on top of me, and something hot and insistent is between my legs. He grunts and struggles trying to fit himself inside me. With a sudden thrust, I am torn in two." Page 123. "In between, men come. They crush my bones with their weight. They split me open, then they disappear. I cannot tell which of the things they do to me are real and which are nightmares. I decide to think that is all a nightmare, because if what is happening is real, it's unbearable." Page 125. "I hurt. I am torn and bleeding where the men have been. I pray to the gods to make the hurting go away, to make the burning and the bleeding stop." And of course, you know I could go on, but I'm repulsed by what I just read. The final argument for keeping this book in your library is that it might have won awards. Wow. The adult film industry also gives awards for porn films. Does that mean we should all go out and watch them? Of course not. I understand this book has been officially submitted for review. I am sure the submitting parent is anxious for the review board's decision. Therefore, I recommend removing the book before any child decides to act out on what they have read in this book.
Thank you, Darrell.
Thank you. I just want to let the community know that we do have a policy on book selection. It's Policy 606. There is a process that we go through for if a parent would like to have that reconsidered.
That's been submitted.
Do we have a request?
Yeah, I do have a submission, and I'll have to work with that parent then to execute on that. So yeah, we can go ahead and, as you said, proceed with the process.
I would actually like to make some comments if that's possible. So I was in the audience five years ago when the class of 2003 that we just honored for graduation was involved in the book request of parents. It kind of, that discussion kind of revolved around the eighth grade social issues book club. I think more work needs to be done. Parents are in a consistent battle trying to protect their children from inappropriate content. The cellphone that they carry, our kids carry, is a portal to all sorts of disturbing materials. It's enough to try to just monitor that. Parents need to know public schools are a safe haven from explicit materials. Not being able to trust that public schools are a safe place is contributing to declining enrollment. Declining enrollment, as we heard, reduces funds, which if it continues, will significantly negatively affect how we can deliver education. I understand that culture of society, the culture of society is often reflected in our school culture. What is appropriate to let in and not is not a new question. It's something schools have grappled with for decades. But it's gone too far, and when schools have, it's gone too far when schools have books prepped with foul language, explicit sex and violence, and then they're available to kids. Public schools have an impact in shaping our culture also. We educate the upcoming generations. Our standards need to be high. Normalizing foul language, sexual promiscuity, and violence should be avoided by us. The over-sexualization of our children is a problem in our society, and it's leading to negative behavioral consequences, and it's making our children vulnerable to predators. Public schools should not be contributing to this problem. Our current rubric for picking materials has very subjective standards. In criteria number five, it asks the evaluator to determine the age or developmental appropriateness of the book, but gives few guidelines. I was told the website Common Sense Media is often used, but the website, that website also relies on a lot of subjective opinions. And you should check out who funds that website. I think that's kind of interesting, too. I would like to see our district add a resource to our rubric to help determine appropriateness. For example, in the motion picture industry rates appropriateness of a film, they use objective standards, including how many times a swear word is mentioned. One of the options I have found is on BookLooks.org. It rates books at six levels, and the website already has many books related. We discussed this a little bit at our curriculum committee this past week. I do have, I did print out the BookLooks rating systems if you want to grab one to take a look at, and I'll try to forward the link this week. And I look forward to improving the process.
Okay. So next.
Well, can I, so we just went through a training as a board that I really would say thank you to all of our board members for engaging in. Darrell, can you reread the first part of your statement for me? Something about, it was your opinion, or I can't remember what it was exactly. Because I think we're at a crossroads from a community standpoint here. Not just here, but across the country, I would argue.
Absolutely.
And I'm trying to remember what your first, because it was something about the schools or your schools, or something to that effect.
No.
Or just can you reread sort of your first?
Yeah. The first paragraph says, "A few years back, the board wrestled with parental requests to remove objectionable books from the school libraries." I said, "We are here again tonight to address the exact same topic, only with new titles, but the same concerns." That was my opening paragraph.
Okay. I thought somewhere in there, because this is my community, this is your community.
It is.
This is our community. So whatever decision we make around text selection, appreciate your vocabulary around that, text selection, I like that. And I think that's what it says in our policy. Does need to be representative of our community, right? And that's why we have a committee and a process. And I appreciate having been a staff member in other districts in other systems. I think Alexandria Public Schools has many good processes in place. I also would say, and I know the work that Michelle and Jesse and Lynn and Trevor and Darcy are doing, to continue to grow and improve those processes. And these are conversations that are okay to have in a community about what's appropriate and what's not. I hope that this isn't about banning, so I appreciate your vocabulary on that. This is about text selection.
Selection.
And then let's allow the process to play out with representation. I think one of the other things that we affirmed in our meeting is how do we take our differences of opinions and turn them into opportunities for growth? I can't remember the exact vocabulary, but strengths, right? Multiple perspectives, I think, are important in our world. And our world has, I would say, maybe at times, lost its way because we're not listening to each other very well. And so if a parent has submitted this concern, which is, that has taken place, great. We appreciate them engaging. We appreciate them being a part of the solution, if you will, right? If parents have concerns, we want them to speak up. That's a good thing. What I'm struggling with is how then we behave as a board as these concerns come forward, It's okay to have, and I think parents should, be engaged and concerned about the content in our libraries. That's called being an engaged parent. Laura, I appreciate what you said about phones, right? These things are scary for kids. And they're not going away, right? They're here to stay. How do we continue to manage that? But I would, I will say that if we're going to do this, this has to be us doing this together. Whatever the result of the committee is, or the process is, is the result of the process. And knowing that we have multiple perspectives in our community. And I'm not sure that our country's political environment has allowed us to sit down and have conversations with different, differing perspectives. And so to bring a concern forward by a parent, great. That's why we have Policy 606, right? That's not a bad thing. But how we do all this, though, is really important, and I think that's maybe part of my frustration, is that how do we help our parents bring these things forward in a way that allows us to continue to partner and celebrate all the good things that you saw earlier tonight from staff, right?
So are you saying that there are people in the community who would approve of this content? Is that what you're saying? And they have an equal voice in terms of the sexual content of these books?
I will say, we have had kids check out this book.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I would say, if they act out on that, and it's linked to this book, you are more liable than you've ever been before for whatever they do to another person.
And do you remember what the content of this book is?
I just shared this with you.
And do you remember the premise of the text and the purpose?
I do, indeed.
You can tell the, you can tell these stories without the explicit sexual explanations and descriptions.
Yes.
And again, that is...
And an adult reading this book is way different than a sixth grader.
A sixth grader.
But I'm not sure, I believe, parents are our first educator. That is true.
And then they...
And Darrell should be the first educator of his children.
Right.
I'm not sure he should be the first educator of my children, right? Liberty is an important foundation of our country. And then we, as a community, let's figure out what that definition is of appropriateness for age levels. I don't think that's a terrible conversation. I think that's a really good conversation.
And I see...
And so I appreciate your perspective.
Yes.
And your concern for our community. I think that's a good thing. I don't, if I have a different opinion about the text than you, I don't think that means that I don't then also value our kids and our community. And I don't know where I stand on this one, because I haven't read the book, right? And I will trust the process that this board, in great wisdom, through past practice, which I think we greatly improved in the last five years, through parent feedback, is a really good thing, right? I think that's a good thing. And in the end, we will sit down and see where this all lands, how this shakes out regarding this text. And if there's others along the way, great. Let's take a look at them. It's not something to run away from.
Absolutely not.
But let's do it together, and not as if we are, I think we're all here to support our kids and our community.
That's right.
And we're going to have different perspectives about things. And that doesn't mean that we can't, and sometimes the opinion might go my way, sometimes it might go your way. And in the, in the end, it should go the way of the community, right? It's not so much about you and me. It's about us. And that's what I hope we can continue. And I appreciate our board really digging into some hard stuff the two hours prior to this meeting. That was not an easy experiment, experience. And we've got to figure out how to get forward together. And that's where the processes that this district has in place, not that we can't improve them, we got a shot to do something that other communities are not able to do.
And that's the hard thing you're asking. How do you come to a consensus of what the community is wanting for the children to have available in their libraries? And my point is, if there are parents who want these books available, they can certainly buy them for their children at home to read, but they don't, but a child going and finding that in the library, and the parent doesn't know about that, that's huge.
Those are great questions for the consideration as we go to the review. I think that's a fine question. Angie, I think you had some stats on the text. Apologies that this is sort of out of context, but I do think that communities across this country are going through the same conversation. And clearly, Darrell, you were prepared with some statements around vocabulary, whether it's banning or whatever that, I mean...
Selection.
Selection, yeah. Alexandria has a chance to be different, right?
Good, good.
By doing this together. And when you talk about winning, the only way we win, I think, as a community is by doing this together and not, I don't know, throwing the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak. If something doesn't go, there are a number of things in this school district that I may not personally like as a parent. Does that mean I'm going to the next school district? No. I'm going to figure out, give feedback, provide some insight about how do I help on the parent's side make this school district better, and understanding that we've got systems and processes in place to help us be strengthened by our differences.
Yes. And by bringing these concerns to you...
Sure.
...is an effort to improve what's happening in the school.
Great. Great. I appreciate that.
Right?
Yeah.
So it's not in opposition to what you're doing. It's to increase...
Right. I personally have been reading, reading some of these books and looking at this since the parent, was it February or March, a parent wrote the school board? So I've been digging in and looking at it myself. I don't know.
And this is where I also want to be intentional. So I do believe that the greatest power should rest with our parents. Yes, the community is also present, but our parents, who are active parents in our schools, are the ones that are going to be a part of these processes. Community members are also important. We have them in a lot of committees, from curriculum to high school. But we got to make sure that our parents are the ones that are present at the table, because they're the ones whose kids are impacted by these decisions. And yes, community members like yourself, welcome to bring concerns forward. I appreciate, we think we've had a very cordial relationship over the last number of years of respect and rapport. That's good. And then let's have parents also then stand up and share their perspectives as we go forward. That's a good thing.
Darrell, I want to thank you, because I know you're standing up here because parents are afraid to stand up, because when they have, in the past, there's been retribution. So I'm hoping that parents are braver and are willing to stand up and make these arguments publicly and by name. But parents are afraid.
Well, I would invite our parents to not be afraid tonight.
Yeah.
I would invite our parents, and I, and I talk to kids, I talk to parents. I had two parents, and I didn't tell this story tonight, but I had two parents this winter who laid into me, they had no fear about giving me feedback about the weather, right? It was supposed to be a blizzard. It wasn't a blizzard that day.
Aren't you in control of that?
I am. And I will happily be responsible for that. Not the weather, but the decision.
No, I talk about the weather.
Yeah. And so if anybody knows our, and our staff, you look at the leaders sitting right here in front of you, we are ready to listen. Even when it comes across not very kind in how that's communicated, and I know that happens, because parents love their kids, right? Your kids, as parents, they should be the number one thing you're passionate about. And so with some feedback, often comes some spice, right? That happens. And that's okay. But I don't, I don't think we, as a school district, are afraid of the feedback. I hope our parents aren't afraid. Our parents do a great job at conferences, almost 100% attendance. It's pretty amazing. So I want to make sure that if there are parents that are afraid, call me. I want to know, I want to change that, change that tone. Let's tackle this thing.
Yeah. Is the school board fully aware of how this process functions so that they know who is the final one to sign off on a particular book or books that are going to the library? Do they know that?
Yeah. So we, those of us that have been here would know that. I don't know if Sean and Laura have had in-depth training on Policy 606. Laura may be on the parent's side.
I've read it.
Yeah. But that is something we can execute on, for sure.
That would be good to know.
Yeah. But again, I think our community has a chance to be different than the rest of the world. All you see is the sparks and the three-second whatever. I'm not even hardly on social media, so I don't know what the terms are, but we got to figure out how to be doing this together with dialogue, with conversation, with understanding that we have different perspectives, and that not every decision's going to go my way personally. Because this is about us as a community, not about me as an individual.
So I'm understanding, I wasn't understanding your frustration. Your frustration is that the book was read out loud tonight.
No, I'm not. I think you picked passages that were not the most challenging, right? I've, I've read the same thing that you shared, so I appreciate you sharing that ahead of time.
Yep.
I think I'm just frustrated in maybe how I'm watching this play out across the country, across our state. This tour just went, almost, enough verbatim is the same word, but the website you referenced just went from Brainerd to Detroit Lakes to Ferguson Falls.
It's a good website. It's very helpful.
I'm not saying it's not. I'm just saying that I don't want our community, I want our community to be unique and be united. That's what I'm saying. Even in the difference of opinion, I guess that's the challenge that I am presenting to us as a community here tonight, is let's, I think our what is pretty common, the how we get there is going to be a little bit different, right? That's okay. And know that not every little decision is going to be approved by Pastor Nappin or Superintendent Sandsted, right? He might like some more than others. I might like some more than others. And it doesn't mean then we just stop figuring it out, right? We got to continue the work. I think that's the part I'm trying to avoid. Knowing so many great community members in this, in this place, Dave, you mentioned our city and our county leaders, this group, I'm just watching the world fall apart around us in other places, and I'm not interested in having that happen.
Yeah. And the difference, I think, that you're talking about, that we're not seeing in the other districts, is we're seeing you listen. Does that make sense? You're listening to what we're having to say.
And it's, yeah, and it's not just me listening. It's these seven people up here.
That's what I'm saying. You're listening.
Mm-hmm.
The input we get from other districts is, they're not listening at all.
Right. And I think if more action would have been taken when the first request was made, then we would maybe wouldn't even gotten to here.
So, and we can come back to the details on that, because I have a very firm memory on that.
Are you referring to the data request?
So we can come back to that. I just want to affirm, if any parents are concerned about sharing their feedback, you don't have to be concerned. You should give feedback on your kid and your kid's experience, or your experience as a parent. That's really important, because if we're going to be our best and strive for excellence, which is on the wall behind you, that feedback actually helps us grow. Is it easy to hear all the time? Nope. It's not. But I want our community to be one that is strengthened, I love what you said, strengthened by our differences. And so that's why a little bit of this extra passion here tonight, is I'm just watching the world around me, and I'm not interested in being a part of that world. I want to be a part of this world.
Yes.
If I can share too, I, when we received our weekly update on Friday and knew that you'd be speaking tonight, and I read the...
Synopsis.
Well, it was the quotes from the book.
Right.
That you might be speaking from. I called Rick to ask him some background about where the book is in our school and information on that. And he shared that, I think it was in Brainerd, that they have a process in their library that can do some parent approval for books before a student would check it out, things like that, that we might be able to explore in our district. And I thought that was a really positive thought as well. And I just share that in the sense of, we very much want, you know, parent permission, parent engagement, and appropriate text selections. I would like to just add that I, what I gather in what you're sharing is that our respect for, as board members, for the process, that we have an appendix, Policy 606, I think it's Appendix B for parents to submit a review, and that's how it goes through the process, and that's in place. And we talked in our curriculum meeting about, in our Curriculum Advisory Council in September, doing some further digging into any changes in the rubric that can come. And so now we just get to let the process happen, and the, and the way that it's laid out in our policy, and see if there's improvements to make in that policy when that time comes for the review in September. And so just wanting to have, you know, unity and respect for that of what we've laid out, and that I think our district's done a lot of positive improvements to creating that policies, you know, over the last five years.
And I would say, we don't get better oftentimes without challenge, right? And so the policy improvements that happen, happen in part because of some, if you go back to 2018, because of a lack of communication with parents. Absolutely. And let's get better in communication, which I think our middle school in particular has done a really good job of. And now does it mean we're perfect? Yeah, I don't think so. Each experience, though, informs the next. And how do we build on that? That's where I think Alexandria Public Schools, from a tradition standpoint, has so many good processes in place. Are they perfect processes? Probably not yet. But are we going to continue to reflect and refine and grow those? Absolutely. And that is the part that I think, from a community standpoint, we can get behind, right? We can be, and Marie, I appreciate that piece about process, because I do think that often helps guide the way.
A step in the right direction to show that you are listening would be, in my opinion, to remove the book immediately until the process is finished.
You know, that's easy right now. You know why?
Because there's no school.
Because it's summer. That's right.
It's summer.
And one of them is missing.
And the high school one, actually, we didn't, so I actually went in to see where they are. The high school one is reported lost, so check. And then we'll have to figure out what we do with lost books. I don't know if some kid didn't bring it back, or who knows, right? We have to track back and find that out, just like we do with any other lost material. And the middle school, yeah, nobody's checking out books this, this summer, so that one's, so it's on hold, and we've got time before September 5th to work the process, which is great.
Thank you.
So, okay, that was a lot of passion from me, sorry. I'm pretty excited about this community being at its best, so.
And I think our school district can be that example and be the best by setting a high standard where parents don't have to worry about sending their kids and what their kids are going to be exposed to.
And I don't think they have to today. And if they do, then they should give us that feedback.
We've been given the feedback.
Because you look at our school safety and our...
Gave you the feedback five years ago, gave you the feedback when my kid went, my second, three years ago.
Let's go future-focused, right? Because you can't relieve the past, right? And if parents have concerns, bring them up. What's not okay, though, is to say that you have a concern, but A, you won't put your name on it. Because I think this is a very safe place. I hope you have felt welcomed here today. I see another one of our community members who's provided feedback to us. I hope he feels welcomed here today. I think this is a safe place to have some community dialogue. I think our school board has created that safe place, now without some challenge, right? And again, but Laura, if you feel like these people are out there, bring them in. Like, you come with them.
They're afraid. Because of my experience, when I spoke up, and community members went to my work and tried to get me fired because they didn't like my opinion I expressed in this room.
You have a great opportunity in front of you. Bring them with. Tell them they're safe with you. It's awesome.
I do.
Then, then, here's the other thing. Share their names with me. I will call them. I'll go have, I started drinking tea, just so I have something to drink in the morning, right? I can go to a cup of coffee.
Yeah.
It's super safe. It's super safe.
Another parent got their professional license questioned for speaking up at the school board? I mean, this has been a problem, so this is why we have fear right now.
So what you might be talking about is accountability. And we'll get to that, too. But you also have, people also have to be accountable. And Michelle and I, right, have some great experiences, or not great experiences, about how parents treat staff. And we still listen, right? I think if, if there's a parent out there who's afraid to come and find us, I would invite them, come and see me. I am here the next couple of days. Maggie can set you up with a time and a place. This is a safe place for feedback.